Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City Griffin Board of Commissioners November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Riedman Court, followed with the invocation with Commissioner Truman Tinsley III. Please join us.
Face the pledge. A pledge of allegiance to the right of United States. Today's the day of our total saying. One nation and our land, the building of the liberty that we have. Most gracious heavenly Father, we're here today to ask your blessings and guidance and perform as a body of specialness. We pray for strength, love, knowledge, understanding. Help us recognize and solve the problems that are presented like our socials, parents, to the best interest of everyone. Help us solve our shortcomings and keep the shenanigans in the team to work for the betterment of the city and its people. We pray now.
Thank you. This time we have the agenda as presented. Do we have a motion to amend the agenda or to approve the agenda? Mr. Tinsley with the motion, second by Ms. Ward. All in favor of the agenda, please signal by raising your hand. Five zero. Under Presentations and Delegations, we have the honor to recognize Mr. William Bill Moore, Systems Operator, as the October two thousand twenty-three Strongest Link in the Chain Award recipient, Jennifer Freeman, Budget Director. So welcome.
Hey, good evening. Um, it is my honor to actually present this award to Mr. Bill. He is um, the definition of what the strongest link is. He is um, just has such a humble spirit. He is kind, pleasant to work with always. Um, he never gets, you know, in a tizzy about anything and we've had lots of compliments about about him from our customers and from our coworkers. Um, it was actually three of his coworkers that nominated him, uh, Missy, uh, Missy Wilkins, um, Stacy Goen, and actually his superintendent, uh, Ms. Tony here. And specifically for this award, they nominated him um, for lots of reasons, but mainly because he was actually the system operator in in the the office when we transitioned over to our new building. So he was there before all the systems were uh, and um, he just did it like a champ. He he never missed a beat. He was just right on it. Um, and I actually learned something from Mayor Holberg recently that I didn't know about Bill is that he takes a week of vacation every year, the week of the fair. So he takes his personal vacation leave so that he can volunteer out at the fair every year. And we all know that um, you know, the Kiwanis, Quanians, all of that goes back into our community. And um, I just think that that's an awesome thing. That's who he is as a person every day. Um, I really believe that the the world need needs more bills.
Do you have anything to say to add?
Um, I would just say that he is the most humblest, selfless person that I have ever had the privilege of working with, and um, we enjoy working with him every day. Um, and everything else that she said, I can um, contest to that, uh, attest to that.
Bill, you have to wear this chain every single day for the next thirty days. Bill is also a former soccer coach. He's a Eagle Scout and just an all-around great guy. Has a double degree from Georgia State, home of the Panthers. Such a joy to be around. Uh, they trip in a great place to live and play. And hoping one day retire.
Anything you want to say?
You want to say anything, Bill?
Yeah.
Thank you. Good job, Bill. All right, this time we're gonna do a couple of proclamations. The first one is a presentation of the proclamation uh, commemorating Retired Educators Day and recognizing the value of contributions of retired educators, Retires Educator Florence Lyons. Anybody else that'd like to join us? Uh, please let me in front to accept the proclamation. Welcome, ladies. My wife's a teacher at Atkinson and she prays for that day every day to be a retired educator. So uh, no, the excitement's a welcome tonight. We have a proclamation tonight. It says, whereas the governor of the state of Georgia has proclaimed Sunday, November five, two thousand twenty-three as Retired Educators Day in Georgia, and whereas there is more than a hundred and forty-two thousand retired educators in Georgia, more than thirty-two thousand of whom are members of the Georgia Retired Educators Association, and whereas retired educators of Georgia donate thousands of hours of volunteer service, their talents to the cause of public education, and their efforts to provide academic development and valuable contributions to the welfare of their respective communities across our state. And whereas because of the citizens of Griffin, Georgia are grateful for the work done by retired educators, it is appropriate that a day be designated for citizens to express their appreciation for the valuable contributions that retired educators have made and continue to make for the betterment of human lives and for society. And whereas local churches, civic groups, governmental entities, and community leadership seek to recognize those lasting contributions made here by retired educators whose altruistic objective is ultimately to leave our society better than they found it. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Griffin Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the date of November five, two thousand twenty-three as Retired Educators Days and cause upon the citizens of the City of Griffin to observe this day in an appropriate manner honoring retired educators. In witness hereof, I have here to set my hand and cause to seal the City of Griffin to be affixed to this proclamation proclaimed the fifth day of November two thousand twenty-three in the City of Griffin to be Retired Educators Day. Signed Douglas S. Holberg and Jessica W. O'Connor, City Manager. So congratulations. And would anybody like to make a statement and then we'll get a picture after that? Go ahead. Thank you.
Well, I guess I'll make a statement. Um, we'd like to thank the city for recognizing retired educators and not only for those of us who have worked in the Griffin Spalding Schools, but those all over the state of Georgia who have dedicated their lives to the calling of teaching.
Thank you so much. And if we're going to come up and have a quick. Our next proclamation is um, presentation of the National Hospice and Palitative Care Month. Brightmore Hospice Community Liaison Jamie Clark will accept this proclamation. And anybody else that is with her can join us. So welcome, Ms. Janey. Let me get my old guy glasses back out. You want, they're here somewhere. Welcome, Ms. Janey. So proclamation honoring National Hospice and Palitative Care Month, November two thousand twenty-three. Whereas for more than forty years, hospice has helped provide comfort and dignity to millions of people, allowing them to spend their final months at home surrounded by their loved ones. And whereas the hospice model involves an interdisciplinary, team-oriented approach to treatment, including expert medical care, quality symptom control, and comprehensive pain management as a foundation of care. And whereas beyond providing physical treatment, hospice attends to the patient's emotional, spiritual, and family needs, and provides family services such as respite, care, and bereavement counseling. And whereas since its conception, the hospice benefits holistic approaches help patients prepare for the fate to face death, and their loved ones carry on supported in the wake of it. And whereas palliative care improves quality of life and often relief from pain can be provided at any time during an illness, and hospices are some of the best providers of community-based palliative care. And whereas in an increasingly fragmented and broken healthcare system, hospice is one of the few sectors that demonstrates how healthcare can and should work at the best for its patients. And whereas one million, one point seven-two million Medicare beneficiaries living with life-limiting illnesses and their families receive care from this nation's hospice programs and communities throughout the United States in twenty twenty and whereas for twenty twenty-three, and given our uni- universal mortality, hospice is valuable benefit for all Americans and their loved ones. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Griffin Board of Commissioners do hereby proudly proclaim the month of November in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-three, to be National Hospice and Palliative Care Month in the City of Griffin, Georgia, and urge all of its citizens to increase their understanding and awareness of care at the end of life. Discuss end-of-life wishes with families and observe this month with appropriate activities and programs. Signed Douglas S. Holberg, Mayor, and Jessica W. O'Connor, City Manager. And as a testimony, my mom uh, went through hospice four years ago, and it the relief and the satisfaction you get as a family is just unbelievable. And so what you do is such a blessing to our community. Would you like to say anything before we get a picture?
Just, I do um, like to always want to bring awareness of hospice and and the benefits that come with hospice and um, we are very proud to be in this community for eighteen years and counting. And we are also um, proud to support uh, so many different families that have gone through hospice. So thanks, Doug. I appreciate it. Thank you all.
But this time we will receive financial reports for September two thousand twenty-three. Finance Director Deborah Manning Gilbert will address. Good evening, Ms. Deborah.
Good evening. Um, this evening we're gonna look at financials for September, which is uh, twenty-five percent into the fiscal year. Uh, our total operating revenue was thirty-five million, which is twenty-five point nine percent of our projections. Our total operating expense is twenty-nine million, which is twenty point five percent of our projected operating expenses for the year. The local option sales tax collected totaled one million four hundred and eighteen thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars, which is twenty-six point seven percent of our projections. Our TSP loss collected is one million one hundred thirty-three thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars, which is thirty point four percent of our projections for the year.
Other questions from the board? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, at this time we'll move into Citizens' Comments. The mayor opens the floor to comments from the audience. Comments should relate to specific agenda item not listed on the agenda for a public hearing or to concern within the jurisdiction of the city. Mission meetings serve a purpose of conducting city business and are not a forum for the unlimited expression of opinion. The mayor reserve the right to limit comments to matters germane to city business and may refer speakers to the city manager or other staff for resolution. With that being said, is there anybody on my left side who'd like to come before the board? Welcome, Dr. Jones. If you could please give your name and address for the question.
Dr. Jones, you know I don't give my address for safety reasons. Um, hello, everyone. Yes, I'm still here. Um, just here to speak about the cold weather that we're having and that we've been receiving calls from citizens that have been threatened to be evicted because their utilities have been shut off. Um, when our mayor was on the campaign trail, he stated that we were blessed to have the utilities that we have in those bills. The federal government determined that was a lie. Um, Senator Warnock has secured eighty-four million dollars in funding for low-income households for energy needs. Um, the funding will pay for home heating and cooling bills, prevent energy shut-offs, restore services, make energy-related home repairs, and weatherize homes to make them more energy efficient. I think that is sad when we have to have our federal government to step in to do what local government could be doing. Um, I know that it's hard to come up with creative and innovative ideas on your own about how to handle these types of situations. But as I've stated before, there needs to be some system where customers are notified when they've gone over their prior month's usage of energy, um, whether it's in a text or email. We already get an email notifying us uh, that it's time to pay our bills. So I don't see why this should be something that is extremely difficult uh, to implement. Also, the fact that there is no system for credit for our customers now, um, which is totally crazy because the majority of the time, the situations that happen are actually because of something that the landlord has failed to do. Um, I think the landlord should be held responsible uh, for these bills. Whenever there's a water leak or something that isn't fixed, and it does not fall on the person who's renting. Because then they're left with these twelve hundred dollar, fourteen hundred dollar utility bills that they did not create. Um, I've also talked about before, uh, certification process where if someone wants to rent out a particular property, it has to go through a process to determine that it's energy efficient and that everything is up to date, up to code, in order for those uh, property owners to be able to rent that particular property out before the utilities can be turned on. These are really simple fixes um, that I think you guys should be able to implement. But right now we're at a place where people are being exploited. And you're continuously doing the wrong thing. When we talk about equity and fairness, um, of course, people believe in a free market economy. But we can't be in a situation where no one wants to see fairness, um, because that becomes malicious capitalism. It's about being willing to do anything for the money and you don't care who has to suffer or who has to die, and that shouldn't be a part of the conversation. Um, I don't feel like we should continuously have to keep having these conversations at every meeting. Everyone knows that these utility costs are out of hand. Um, the federal government would not be stepping in if if that wasn't the case. But I also want to state that um, the citizens are paying attention. Uh, we know this with this past election, although we had our mayor, the incumbent, to um, succeed in this election. There were one thousand one hundred and twenty-nine people who voted someone else. Um, there were twelve thousand people that didn't vote. And I just want to say, if anyone thinks it's going to be business as usual, I can guarantee you that we have a recall petition with your name on it. Going forward, you need to make sure that every I is dotted and every T is crossed because we are watching. Thank you.
Is anybody on my left for the board? Is anybody on my right side who'd like to come before the board? Moving into the consent agenda, we have items five through ten. Do we have a motion to accept consent as a whole? Ms. Murray with motion. Thanks, Murray, with a second. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Five zero. Moving to item eleven under the regular agenda. Consider a resolution to amend the City of Griffin's fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three operating capital budget in the amount seventeen million five hundred eighty thousand five hundred ninety-one dollars and fifty-four cents, and also amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four operating capital budget in the amount of nineteen million seven hundred thirty-eight dollars and six hundred and sixty nineteen million seven hundred thirty-eight thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty-six cents. Uh, we have a motion to approve the resolution. Ms. Murray with motion. We have a second. Mrs. Ward with a second. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Five zero. Item twelve is consider a resolution and authorize the mayor to execute a two thousand twenty-four community development block grant, CBBG, application for one million dollars to the Georgia Department of Community Affairs to make public water and sewer infrastructure improvements in the Pleasant Avenue and Mowers Avenue in North Nineteenth Street. So this is Ward with motion. Say goodbye, Ms. Murray. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Five zero. Item thirteen is consider a task order from the Blackman Beach Corporation under the master service agreement for consultant services for a lead service line inventory model in the amount of hundred and thirty thousand dollars and amend the budget accordingly. Motion to, Ms. Murray with motion.
Say.
Second by Commissioner Ward. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Five zero. Item fourteen is consider a termination agreement with Strong Capital X LLC to terminate the license number NS one eight three eight six nine obtained from Central Georgia Railway Company on July seventh, nineteen forty-eight, covering electric power line crossing in Sunnyside, Georgia. We have a motion to terminate this agreement. Mrs. Murray with a motion. We have a second. Second by Commissioner Ward. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Five zero. Item fifteen is consider agreement for release and satisfaction of all claims with Philip Harp providing for payment twenty-five thousand for purpose of reacquiring section E, block eight, lots nine and ten of Oak Hill Cemetery and satisfying all claims related to Mr. Harp burial rights, interest in those lots, and amend the budget accordingly. Ms. Murray with a motion.
Say.
Second by Commissioner Ward. All in favor of the agreement, please signal by raising your hand. Five zero. Item sixteen is to consider authorizing the submission of fifty thousand dollar grant application to the roadside enhancement and beautification council in TDOT to beautify and improve the landscaping area at US nineteen forty-one and suburb sixteen. Mr. Tinsley with a motion. Second by Commissioner Ward. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Five zero. And we will say again. Um, I don't think so, but we should be fine. And we'll hold off on item seventeen executive session for the city manager report.
We've had a busy day today already. First, we want to congratulate Bill on his strongest link and certainly well deserved. Glad to work with him. I've known him since elementary school, I think. Yeah. So we go back to him. Um, also, we had a great lunch today and a tour of Nuban Vinegar or American and nothing to say wrong. Um, but the DuPans were in the left side of the park, so that was a fun time to see what they do um, out there and get to meet a lot of the people. Um, and we also had our third and hope for the final Spirit of Committee for our comprehensive plans. We all seed up for you on the fourth of December. Um, we have a couple of hearings. We're going to be continued on CTA for about ten, maybe a few October, but we're able to get in position. As of two twenty, that's now on schedule for that. And then lastly, we have a lot of events coming up in the missions to the holiday to win children, make the children a founder. Um, November twenty-first at five thirty, the Spalding will be hosting Spalding right at the park. Um, December first, there will be a downtown tree lighting right out front of customer service, the historic Fendy Mills Tree. December eighth, which is a Friday night, there will be a mistletoe night market, so you'll be some Christmas shopping. And then December ninth is our now second annual, very popular hometown holiday illuminated parade. Um, so we're excited to see some entries there, and that was a really good time last year, so we hope you all will also attend. And then also, don't forget that we will have a workshop on December twelfth because we have canceled um, the December twenty-sixth meetings. You might want to be there the day after Christmas. So December twelfth, we will have a nine o'clock workshop um, that we hope you all can attend and then the night that night as well. And that is it for me.
Mr. Whala? Commissioner Murray?
Something, and I'm feeling you didn't hear. I'll tell you now, I forget. There is um, on Ellen Drive. You know what, Ellen Drive. Okay. As you come out on back onto Hill Street, right up across from Jimmy Horowitz County, the street has been paved and it looked beautiful, but there is a very deep draw-off um, coming off Ellen Drive that could possibly tear a lot of people's cars. So that's one thing. And then if I, oh, I got a call from Tanisha that lives on um, East Wall. And didn't we pave that street too? And I think we might have had some some speed limit um, um, box or something there. But she said that now that it's paved, it's just almost a race track. So if you can get somebody to. Yes, it.
Ms. McQuarrie?
Uh, want to um, congratulate the Spalding High School, Jared Lawrence Football Team for advancing through the second round of the state playoffs. As did uh, all of our Griffin Spalding residents to go out and support Jared Lawrence. Um, I think they played this Friday at home. And they're also seeking donations, so if you can. Not sure. Uh, food town. Um, they they are seeking donations, so if you can, one of the things, you know, those student athletes out would be greatly appreciated. Don't be a person.
Just a playoff team.
They are.
Did you complete? Bill, congratulations.
Oh, yeah, and hold on, man. And Bill, my my former, my former coworker, uh, Bill, uh, trained me when I got to the United Bank for six years. I worked under his uh, two digits, and he's a very, very good employee. Everything they said about Bill is true, and there's a fan on me. Okay.
Sorry, I'm sorry. So, again, thanks. What can you do? Uh, Mayor, congratulations on your elect, the elect. And um, hope your mind has a nice trip to go to come back. All right, a couple of thank you to staff, Citizens Government Academy. We had the reception last Thursday night for graduation, so Danielle and her team did a great job and the feedback we got from the citizens engaged in that was a very positive response. We did it this year out at the golf course um, outside the clubhouse under the line. So thanks a lot. Um, want to, we gotta thank you. Um, we had a request from some of the folks in the um, Audubon area about lights on South Pine Hill, on North Pine Hill Road. So if you drive from Buckwood, Massie back into country club area that's lit, and then Rose's team got stripes on the yellow line and on the white lines, and so they dropped off some cookies and passed on to the lighting department. So I hope they all got some thank yous on that. Um, and then want to thank the voters for re-electing you. This will be my, starting my twenty-first year on board of commissioners and mayors. So it's a joy to get to turn my committee down. I love and support being working with all the citizens. Do you have anything else? Okay. We'll move into executive session. Consider so, uh, consider executive session pursuant to CTA section fifty-fourteen three D one D for the purpose of authorizing negotiations to purchase, dispose, or lease property pursuant to CTA section fifty-fourteen two one for the purpose of consulting and meeting with the legal counsel pertaining to pending or potential litigation, settlement claims, administrative proceedings, or other judicial actions brought or to be brought by or against the agency or any officer or employee or in which the agency or any officer or employee may be directly involved. This war made a motion. If you would, second. Mr. Tinsley with a second. All in favor? Say aye and join us in the back. All in favor, say aye and join us in the back. We have a motion to adjourn. Ms. Ward with a motion adjourned. We have a second. Ms. Ward with a second.